Evening folks, welcome to our October board workshop meeting. Reminder that our board workshops are a bit more of an open format. An opportunity for us to delve deeply into questions that you may have relative to items that will be on the board agenda for next Tuesday at our voting. So I encourage the board members to, if any question, go online, collect any items, let's take the time to discuss what we need to. So with that, we're going to move on to a report from Dr. Winters. And this evening, Dr. Winters is going to talk about student testing and student data outcomes. Welcome, Dr. Winters.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Always appreciate the opportunity to talk to the board, and especially this time of year, to do an overview of district data. Before I get into the nuts and bolts of the presentation, I just want to talk very briefly about the new data warehousing tool that we have for the district this year. It's called Onhand Schools. And we really believe that for the teachers and for the district as a whole, it's going to be a game changer. Administrators were trained on it today. Teachers are being trained next Monday at the in-service day. And what's really nice about it is you can go in, you can access any number of different kinds of data, from attendance to discipline to SAT, ACT scores, PSSA, Pvas, DIBBS, any of the data that we track regardless of grade level. And you can drill down to the student. You can look at trends. You can look at how students scored over a period of time. You can look at correlation data. And it's going to be really helpful to teachers because they're going to be able to look in, and even with PSSA, drill down to what are the standards that my kids last year didn't do well on? What are the assessment anchors? How many questions do they comprise within the assessment and how can I know where my students? So a lot of the data I'm going to share with you tonight is things that came off of the Onhand Schools website and product, and we're really, really excited about that field and what it's going to do. So the first thing I'd like to talk about from a data perspective is some demographic data. And this was really interesting to me when I came across this, and so I wanted to share this with all of you as well. This is currently our current demographic subgroup breakdown. Hundred and twenty-eight students that have a 504 plan, sixty-two students that are English language learners. That number is way up from previous years and continues to grow, as Mrs. Devlin talked about at the curriculum committee meeting tonight. Eight hundred and forty-seven students with IEPs, three migrants, and ninety-one Title One. Our Title One students are identified between Lorraine Elementary School and Jackson Wall Elementary School. And so you can see the percentages, but we have a much more diverse student body, both academically and in other areas as well. I would also add to that that the free and reduced lunch percentages for September came out today. Lorraine is at thirty-eight percent. Jackson Wall is at forty-four percent. Wrighton, or sorry, Woggin Creek, twenty-eight percent. Wrighton, thirty-five percent. Senior High, twenty-six percent. Junior High, thirty-two percent. Overall, thirty-three percent as a district. And honestly, if you really wanted to drill down, it's probably higher, but as is often the case when you get to the senior high school, students, I think largely for embarrassment factor and some others, are less apt to want to submit that paperwork. And so we probably have more students than twenty-six percent at the high school that were qualified. They're just not, you know, returning the paperwork. So thirty-three percent, you know, is a pretty sizable number. And so, you know, we definitely have some change in demographics and economically disadvantaged side of things as well. Get on the next slide, Ann. Another piece of non-academic data, although directly related to academics, that I wanted to share with you, and this came directly off of Onhand Schools when I was looking at it, is some attendance data. These are our numbers so far into the school day by grade level of the number of students that have missed between five and nine days of school. And it's pretty significant if you go across and you add up all the columns. And really, there is a tremendous direct correlation between a student's achievement score on PSSAs and keystones and how much school days. And so this is a real eye-opener for us at the district level and for our building administrators, and even for our teachers when they get Onhand Schools training on Monday to look at this. You know, I looked at the kindergarten, you know, number, and, you know, eleven kindergarten students that have missed between five to nine days of school. You think about those early reading skills that are developed in kindergarten and how far that sets a student back if they've missed, you know, nine days. Allison asked me at curriculum committee meeting, do we have a slide for ten or more? That's probably data I can generate as well. I didn't do that for the purpose of this evening, but I think this alone is really kind of an eye-opening slide that this is something we need to be paying attention to, students missing a lot of school. Yes?
Are we identifying absent here? Is this a legal absence or any type of absence? Just gets me.
This is, this is any. This is any.
Really, you're not there for instruction?
Yeah. Yep. I got the next slide, Ann. The other non-academic piece that I wanted to show you is some discipline referral data so far into the school year. Again, I think discipline referrals, like attendance, directly impact academics because if you're being referred for certain things, the result could be after-school detention, but it could be in-school suspension, it could be out of school, and instruction is not the same when you have those types of things. But this is the ten, top ten, you know, misconduct types, you know, that we're seeing. Disrespect, you know, is very high, you know, as is just general misconduct, and then issues with one-to-one, not being prepared with the devices and the consequences and the handbook associated to that. So, but I thought that, you know, it was very interesting. Again, I think this is really useful data, especially for principals to, you know, see, you know, what kinds of, you know, trends are we seeing at the building? And to me, you know, when I saw total referrals of that number at this point in the school year, that seemed high to me. And so, you know, this was another piece of data that was very eye-opening in addition to the attendance that I think informs and has bearing on our instructional practice, even though it's not, you know, completely academic. The next slide, please, Ann. What I'm really, yes?
We're on like day twenty-five of school, correct?
Yes.
And so just to give an example, how many kids are missing? And we're only on day twenty-five. How many are discipline referrals and we're only on day twenty-five?
Yeah. Yeah. And no, that's totally fine. And, and yes.
Is there any reason for this? I mean, I am, I am a boss and I need to tell my teacher. I mean, I, I think in my whole career, I, I probably took ten kids and referred them for discipline problems. And the rest I kept myself and my, and my own room and dealt with them and got them on their job and got them wanting to be involved in school. I can't believe kindergarten kids not wanting to be involved in school. What does that count?
You know, I mean, I don't, I don't have a concrete answer for either of those questions. I can tell you that when we went through the Onhand Schools training, I kind of had the same response with the attendance data. You know, Mrs. Moser at Jackson Wall kind of turned to me and she said, Patrick, I've signed more educational field trip forms at this point in the school year than I've ever signed ever before, you know, in my career. So, you know, I wonder, you know, how much of that may contribute to some of the absences, you know, parents going on field trips or going on trips during the school year. So that's, that's one thing that I think could be explored. In terms of the discipline pieces, I think early in the school year, that oftentimes is that period of time where you've got classroom teachers and also administrators trying to establish what the expectations are in the building, and that, you know, when students don't meet expectations, that there are consequences attached to them. And so I wonder if that has something to do with it as well. Those are just theories. You know, I don't have concrete data to back that up, but as I've kind of had some anecdotal conversations, those would be my suppositions based on what's here. And the other thing is at administrative meeting, we can have this deeper dive into discussions with the principals, for sure.
I just hope that they don't, you know, if kids come and they get referrals because they have two, they were two of them. I mean, it seems, I'm not really a guess with the number we're looking at. I don't know what I knew I could get here with these.
I, yes, but I look at what they are, and I do agree that I, I would imagine that what's happening right now is they're trying to lay down a law, like this is not going to be accepted, and if you are not, if you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, you're going to get written out. So I would hope that a trend would go downward from here on.
Well, and I think too, that, you know, all of our principals always ensure that the consequences are developmentally appropriate for the level in which, you know, they're serving, you know, as a principal. So, you know, misconduct is a broad category, but misconduct, if you're in kindergarten, the consequence for that is going to look dramatically different than misconduct if you're a sophomore in high school, which may be an after-school detention or something along those lines.
And these referrals, that's why me and your dean suspend it.
That's true as well.
Maybe just a discussion.
Yeah.
Kind of restore the practice.
Correct. Correct. Really, what, what I'm trying to do tonight with all the slides as we go through them, this is kind of the, kind of the thirty-thousand-foot, you know, overall district view. A lot of the data that's here tonight, I didn't break down necessarily to building level or to grade level, because I really wanted this to focus on district-wide. We're taking those deeper dives and deeper digs into at the building level, working with principals. Tonight focuses more on big picture in terms of district. So the next slide, I'm sorry, Ann, you're back up. Sorry. That's okay. On this slide, we're looking at our ELA/PSA from the eighteen-nineteen school year, and this is total. This is all the students in grades three through eight collectively that took the ELA/PSA, and sixty-nine percent of our students in grades three through eight were proficient or advanced on the ELA/PSA in eighteen-nineteen. I'll get into some cohort data here in a minute. Yes, Jerry, do you have a question?
I did, but it can wait.
Okay. Fine. So one of the things that I think is valuable when we talk about ELA/PSA data is to look at cohorts. In other words, ensure that we're comparing apples to apples, looking at the same group of kids and seeing, you know, are they, are they flatlining? Is it up and down? Are they trending upward completely within a cohort? And so, and so what I did on this slide is I started with essentially the class of 2023, which are our current freshmen, and showed you their cohort data. Now, 2014 was kind of the last year of the old PSSA that wasn't necessarily PA core-aligned. And so, and then fifteen started with that new PSSA. And so you, so those, those students, they were at eighty percent in third grade, and then the current freshman that just took it last year in eighth grade, that eighth grade class, that same group of kids was at sixty-five percent. Our class of 2024, which is our eighth graders this year, when they were in third grade in 2015, they were at seventy-three percent. And 2019, that same group of kids was at seventy-one. So relatively the same, relatively flat over that period of time. The class of 2025, which is our current seventh graders, when they were in third grade in 2016, they were at seventy-three percent. And 2019, in this past year, they were at seventy-seven. So that cohort is trending upward. And then the class of 2026, which is our current sixth graders, in, when they were in third grade, they were at sixty-eight, and just this past year, as fifth graders, they were at seventy-one. So that, that class is trending upward as well. So I think that's really, really important data to look at because if I had just given you our overall ELA scores, 2014, 2015, 2016, it's apples aren't, you have different groups of kids each year. This is showing the same group of kids, so you can follow that, that cohort. So if you jump to the next slide, please. You know, I think the big, yeah, sure.
What would be an acceptable range? Like you see one is seventy-seven, for instance, a class of 2025. They start at seventy-three, go up to seventy-seven. Is that a normal range? Or is the class of 2023 a normal range? So what's acceptable?
Yeah. I mean, I, I would say, to me, a normal range is maybe within two percentage points, you know, or less. I think if it's three to four, that, that's somewhat of a jump one way or the other. I tend to look at the cohort more in terms of where they started and then where they are now as kind of overall growth, you know, of a cohort. So, you know, our, our current ninth graders, that's the cohort that I'm probably most concerned about from a data standpoint, because the other three cohorts either stayed flat or are trending upward. But the bigger piece, I think, after you look at the cohort data and the overall ELA/PSA data, is so now what? Okay, so what does this mean? How do we take this? How do we apply it to the classroom? One of the things that's really nice about Onhand Schools, and our teachers, I think, are going to love it when they see it on Monday, is when you look at data, you can click on the percentage of students that are proficient, and you can drill down, and it generates a report by, by assessment anchors. Takes the PSSA, breaks it down, all the different questions, how many are in each category, and gives you a percentage of how many, of what percentage of students were proficient on that anchor. And so I looked at that data and disaggregated it and broke down for you in each of the grade levels, kind of a focus area or focus areas that, based on our data for eighteen-nineteen, that we can be looking at. You'll notice craft and structure pops up a couple of times, especially in third grade and in fourth grade. That's a lot of your, you know, writing and putting together a, you know, coherent response, and also recognizing author's craft and structure when you're reading something. Integration of knowledge and ideas pops up in five, six, and seven. So, you know, we see a theme there, and then this knowledge of language pops up in eighth and also showed up in third. So we see some common areas. What that does is that provides teachers, then when they look at it, okay, I'm a seventh grade language arts teacher. I know those are the two, you know, assessment anchors related to the PA core standards that I need to focus on and pay a little bit more attention to in my instruction. And that's really kind of the big reason why we got Onhand Schools, is that we want teachers to be using data to inform their instructional practice. Yes, Mike?
So when do you propose during the day, teachers will be able to access and use this data with the time and restrictions and limitations that they have?
You know, I would see this as, you know, something that would inform their lesson planning when they're doing their lesson planning. And that very much is going to look different, teacher to teacher. Some teachers do lesson planning during their preparation periods, some teachers do it after school or before school, some do it in the evenings at home. I think you're absolutely right. I think when you look at the, kind of the structure of a school day, in particular an elementary school day, that, you know, no, there really isn't that time to kind of, in the middle of instruction, say, okay, hang on a second, let me jump over here and hop on Onhand and look at this. But we're giving them a large chunk of the day on the fourteenth, part of that in-service day, to look in it, to dig in and set some goals in literacy and math, and then in-service, and then our early dismissal days moving forward. But no, it's not, it's not being rolled out as, you know, this is something you should be logging into in the middle of your instruction while you're teaching. The other thing too, is that, you know, we found, even with Performance Plus, the product that we had previously, large percentage of our teachers, just because they're outstanding professionals and care about their work, we're finding ways to log into it at different points in time to look at it to inform their instruction. And I have no doubt with this tool that that practice won't continue. And if anything, compared to the two tools, Onhand is like yours easier to use.
Much easier.
Much easier to use, and I think teachers will find it a whole lot more user-friendly.
And with, you know, data's great, I mean, baseball's terms of metrics, hospitals use it all the time, but those of us who are not schooling analytics are not necessarily, we need a resource to go to. Who would be the resource then in the district for a teacher that doesn't necessarily know all the needs and hours? What structure are we building to support that?
So really, a team of a lot of folks, our coaches. So our two tech coaches, Dan Will, Technisi Dow, and also Karen DiNazio. Myself, Melissa, and then whoever the supervisor of math and STEM is. The building administrators, we train them today, our special ed supervisors. So it's really a, a large team, a large structure. Even in the IT department, Joe Way is very well-versed in how to use this tool, as is Joe Calamita. And then we're going to get some kind of more targeted training for the reading intervention specialists at the K to six level, so they'll become an additional resource in the building for the teachers to lean on and use. So as is with anything, I never believe that you put something out there without layering enough support in so that folks know who they can go to, and, and those, those support structures are, are there and will continue to be there. Absolutely. Go to the next slide, Ann. So this is looking at math. So three to eight across the district, numbers are not nearly as strong. Forty-seven percent, that was collectively grades three through eight for math on the PSSA in eighteen-nineteen. When we look at the cohort related to math, the next slide, Ann. So looking at, you know, this is, this is much more concerning to me because we don't have any cohort that is performing higher than it was when they entered in third grade. There's, you know, there's been an overall decline in all of them. Now, third grade 2014, for the current ninth graders, that's an outlier because that was previous PSSA, different assessment. So, you know, that, that number's kind of an outlier. I just had it there because it shows the third, you know, third through eighth progression. Fifties and forties is where we've been over the past several years. You know, some, some reasons that I think might contribute to some of these scores, I think one is that still working with our teachers and giving them the support they need on learning how to teach math more conceptually. Investigations and CPM were both purchased, and they're both products that focus on conceptual understanding of math, and that's hard. And when you look at some of the assessment anchors that I'm going to put up in just a second in terms of growth area, and you look at what grade levels and what some of those things are, teaching students how to kind of wrap their head around those concepts, that's a challenge. We've got some folks that are doing it really well, and we're leveraging some of those skills. A second piece is the need for math interventions. And we talked about this at curriculum committee this evening. We have not had math interventions in the district. We've had literacy interventions, but we have not had math. That's absolutely needed in a big way. The data bears that out. And so we're going to need to figure out what that looks like, build some capacity in our, in our intervention specialists, to how do we do math interventions? The supervisor of mathematics in STEM, when that individual comes on board, it's going to take some, kind of some overall vision casting for math, similar to what the curriculum committee saw with literacy with Melissa this evening. So there's, there's that piece. You know, I think we need to begin to audit investigations and also college prep math. We've had them going on five-plus years now. There, there is some excellent free content math-wise that, you know, may be, you know, something to explore as a possibility. And then I think the last piece I would say related to math is amount of instructional time. Currently, and we'll use the elementary model as an example, students have more minutes of literacy than they do of math. So do we need to potentially revisit the schedule and make those numbers more equal? And that's a much bigger conversation than me just saying we should do that. That involves sitting down with principals, looking at how that would impact the schedule, all those different kinds of things. But I think they're all things that, that we can and need to look at. If you jump to the next slide, these are some of the focus areas, you know, grade three, geometric measurement, understanding of fractions and numbers, solve problems with four operations, identification and explanation of patterns in arithmetic. Like, think about that. You know, we're asking a third grader, I mean, that, that's hard. I mean, that, I mean, these are, these are tough things. You know, fourth grade, you know, generalization of place value understanding for multi-digit whole numbers, operations and algebraic thinking, generation analysis of patterns. Fifth grade, we look at conversion of measurement units in a measurement system, using the coordinate plane to solve problems are a couple of examples. Flip to the next slide, you can see some of the areas in six, seven, and eight. In grade six, interpretation and solving one variable equations and inequalities is just one example. Grade seven, drawing comparative inferences about populations, application and extension of operations to add, subtract, multiply, and divide rational numbers. You know, grade eight, understanding of rational and irrational numbers, understanding of the connections between proportional relationships, lines, and linear equations. This is, this is comprehensive stuff. And so, you know, we definitely need to put some supports in place to, you know, help our teachers know how to best, you know, teach math conceptually. Dreambox and iXL are helping. They're helping with that math fact fluency piece, you know, which is important. You know, how many times have, maybe you guys, you know, child, grandchild, or whatever has said, you know, what's so-and-so plus so-and-so or so-and-so times so-and-so in your head? You can say, it's this, because you remember, you know, being drilled those math facts when you were younger. You know, those fluency pieces are not necessarily, you know, directly part of the conceptual teaching of math and the PA core standards, so we've had to figure out ways to address that. Dreambox and iXL are helping with that. The next slide, Ann. This just gives you a graph of our science data. Seventy-four percent, that's grades four and eight both. Pretty good number. We had really, really good numbers in elementary, K to four. We go to the next slide. Wanted to give you a little bit about the Keystone data. This is our Keystone Algebra One data. Seventy-five percent of our students that took the Keystone Algebra One exam were proficient or advanced. That number includes our seventh and eighth graders. We do have some seventh and eighth graders that take that Keystone exam in middle school. They're very, very successful. Mrs. DeLong does a very nice job getting those students ready for that assessment. Going to the next slide, biology, sixty-nine percent proficient on biology. And then the next slide is literature. Literature, seventy-three percent in eighteen-nineteen, proficient on the literature Keystone exam. When we drill that down on the next slide to some of the anchors, things to focus on, biology, genetics, is an area that, you know, kind of the sub-area that on the Keystone, drilling down that anchor chart, we didn't do real well on as a district in literature. And this one kind of makes me smile because, you know, we've heard, those of us that kind of work in literacy, nonfiction, 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 prepare kids to be able to break down nonfiction. And really, when you look at our, you know, our anchor assessment is reading for meaning in fiction that they struggle with. I was talking to a high school English teacher about this this afternoon, and she said to me, you know, Patrick, like, nonfiction's engaging. Kids enjoy reading it, but it's hard to get kids always excited about the classics in literature, and so their minds can wander a little bit more when they're trying to read for meaning in literature. I thought that's pretty astute, you know, observation from a, from a seasoned English teacher. And then Algebra One, operations with real numbers of expressions. And then closing out, since we've kind of been talking about high school and keystones, I thought, you know, you guys may want to see some of the SAT data from last year. This is by percentile interval. So this just shows you number of students nationally in reading, based on their SAT reading score, which percentile interval they fell in. Largest number of Exeter students that took it last year in reading were in the forty-one to sixtieth percentile nationally. And then in terms of math, the highest, Exeter students, we had over fifty kids in the sixty-one to eightieth percentile in math on the SAT nationally. And again, what's nice about that Onhand product is that when the teachers go in, they can click on this bar, the list of kids will come up, it'll show them what the kid's reading score was, the math score, the overall score, and they can look at that. That's a really valuable data point for school counselors and also for building principals.
And would those two boxes there, would those be anybody that took it ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that, is there, do eighth graders take it too? Is there any eighth graders in that?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Yeah.
So my last slide is questions. I know there's, we've got a lot of questions throughout. I know it's a lot of information. Yes?
So one of the things that you mentioned was, in addition to the need for math interventions, you talked about the need to audit investigations. So what are the questions that you'd be asking, and what would you be looking to try to understand?
I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, that I would want to know is, I would want to look at some of our, like, we give common assessments. I would want to look at some of our, like, we give common assessments by unit that are part of investigations that Pearson develops. I'd want to look at some of those kind of each year that we use the product, because we have that information, and see if I notice any trends. You know, I'd want to look at, you know, does, you know, do those programs, is there any kind of correlation between it's been much more difficult to teach math within the framework of our schedule given the breadth of those programs? So I'd probably look at that, at that scheduling piece. Honestly, I think there's a huge anecdotal piece with the teachers. I mean, I think it's really, really important, you know, to just sit down with teachers that were teaching math before we got investigations and college prep math and now have been teaching it with this product, and, you know, what are they finding? You know, what do they like about it? What concerns them about it? I, you know, I've never been an advocate that when one program's not working, I think if you bag it, you bag it for something better, and that's not always another program, because the danger in that is, when you purchase a new program, you have that implementation process, you need two or three years for it to get fully implemented, and then you've invested all this money, and it may or may not, you know, be the right, you know, the right piece. And there are some very good resources out there. New York State has done a lot of Common Core work around math, and their entire curriculum is online, and it's free. It's called Engage New York. Pennsylvania has done a model curriculum in math where they built out units that districts can use that are free, that are on the SAS website. And so, you know, we may begin to look at potentially piloting some of those with certain teachers. I mean, I think, but really, like, out of all those things, I think the biggest one to me is that I know that we have some teachers at all levels that really like the products and are using them well, and I want to find out what it is that they like about them. Maybe there's a way to leverage some of their expertise and offer some targeted PD. You know, you know, Mr. P, I know your wife is one of them who uses that tool very effectively, is really skilled with investigations, and I'm all about building capacity, you know, internally, and maybe there's an opportunity, you know, your wife, others, to say, okay, can we bring some of these folks in, can we leverage some of their skill and provide more training that way? And then, two, once the new supervisor at Math and STEM gets on board, I think, you know, she and I need to sit down and kind of talk about this big picture and, you know, where do we see as far as next steps going?
So just two other questions. Is this, is the need to audit investigations, as you said, is that something we're actually going to do, or is that just we're thinking about? That's number one. Two, how much have we spent to date on the investigations?
And in answer to your first question, I see the audit piece as something that we absolutely need to do. You know, I don't see that as something we need to think about, because we've been using investigations in CPM, I believe it's five, six years. And so when you implement a product that big, I think you should see better fruit, if you will, than what we're seeing in our math data right now. As far as your second question, in terms of dollars and cents, I don't know an exact figure. I'll find that out and I'll share it with the board. But I know, in particular, just the professional development, when you have to bring out one of their consultants, it's very high. Like, I think they're around ten thousand dollars. They're really expensive compared to some other consultants that come in to do PD, which is over twenty-five hundred dollars. So my guess is that number's probably pretty high, but I can get a more exact figure for you.
And much? Is that program one that we renew every year, like you say, for a license online, that kind of thing? Or is it something that we pay for and it's done?
You pay for it initially, but every year there are, you know, renewable things you have to purchase. I mean, yes, there is a digital component that is tied to it, but there, it also comes with workbooks. They're not extra, but you have to, you have to get workbooks every year. And, you know, anytime we have new teachers that come into the district that haven't had, you know, CPM training or those resources, or we have to figure out PD for them. And so, I mean, no, the financial outlay after the first year is not as much, but there are expenses annually, but it's not a, it's not a once in a lifetime.
Right. And the digital component, like, I know the new things that we're starting to buy, it seems that, like, it's for six years, and then we're going to have to buy something new. Is this going to end anytime soon? Or, you know, is what we have now, we have except for the workbook costs and everything?
I believe it's except for the workbook costs. I'll confirm that as well. You know, I think something else that we look at related to math is benchmark assessments. Like, with our units in math, with our structure in math, you know, are there additional assessments we can be doing along and maybe regrouping and doing some things accordingly? So there, you know, there are a lot of ideas that I have in my head. I think, you know, again, we need to get that supervisor on board, because I think we need to kind of get that vision, and that would be something that we presented curriculum committee meeting and talked about a little more detail.
I mean, looking at this, this is terrible.
Yes, concerning, without.
And we definitely need some sort of focus group that is going to focus on this, because when I keep hearing, oh, iXL's going to fix it, or Dreambox is going to fix it, those things are not going to fix it.
No, no, it's true.
We need direct instruction by teachers, so that is what is going to fix it. So.
Yeah, no, I, you're absolutely right. It's definitely a concern, and, yeah, it's definitely a focus among right now.
And I mean, we're talking about our kids learning conceptually, that takes a really long time, and I'm trying to move my seventh grader onto, you know, solving equations, and he's still dividing by drawing rectangles. Like, it takes twenty minutes to divide that way, and they haven't been taught all division. So, and it's kind of, hey, if I teach math home, but they have to.
Sure.
So that's a, that's a problem.
Yes.
I have several questions for you to answer. Sorry, I figured it was better if I went to go and read, figure it finished before I started reading my questions, get the whole picture. So obviously, since we're on the math, I know, obviously, not really based on the numbers we saw there. First question I have is, what's responsibility of those who are providing their system to come to Fed, why is it? I mean, if we made this substantial investment over several years, we've integrated the program completely into our student body, and now we're seeing total underperformance. In fact, we're seeing our children regress in it. I would think at this point, that group should be called to explain exactly where they're failing. We shouldn't be having to invest ten thousand dollars for them to come into a song and dance to prove themselves. They should come here for free and figure out where we're missing steps, so we can fix the problem. Because obviously, at this point, this program is a failure. I mean, the reason we bought into this program was because we knew we had challenges in our math program, we wanted our children to improve, we wanted to invest our students. In fact, I don't think you've done any good service at this point. I think what we did was frustrate parents. I think we frustrated students. I don't think we've ruined our program. Am I accusing you? I'm just saying, I mean, at this point, it just seems that we should call on them on the market after this, investing this much time and money in. With regards to that, are there neighboring school districts which are using this teen program? And if so, what are their results of this program? How are they doing?
To my knowledge, I don't, I know there are some districts towards Chester County, I know they're using CPM, I'm pretty sure Colesville is using it. I don't know within Berks County, that's something I can find out specifically. We have a curriculum coordinators group that meets on a regular basis, and we can talk about math, oversee what programs people are using, and so I can do a survey with my colleagues in that group and see if anybody's using it. I don't believe there are many in Berks County that talk.
I mean, I guess what you're talking with the individuals you find, I guess the fine question is, if you compare where you were before you got to here, do you feel like it was worth the time and love to get to here? You know, I mean, I'm seeing a seventh grader still using rectangles to do the vision. Frankly, I'm dealing with my head driving down the road, I'm not even looking at this paper. You know, I'm talking to the seventh grade grade. Now, granted, there are some people who are more of a math fanatic, but for a general student, by the time you get to seventh grade grade, division's not the problem, you're moving into bigger things.
Right.
Variables.
Right.
Wanted to step out of that a little bit. Going back towards your second slide, it was, or actually, your first real slide was, with regards to the IP, you're twenty-two percent, is that a typical number we would find in a school? Or is that a number that's higher, that twenty-one percent?
That's a little high.
So we're a little, butting a little higher. Yeah. Regarding the number eleven, twelve period, we're already starting to see that, found that school's optional and thought it was good. How do we, how, you know, early in the season, how do we turn the team around and get them back towards, you know, the end zone before they realize if you go for the exits too quickly, and besides, college and school or high schools really optional? How do we, how do we go friendly program first and reach them? I don't know. I'm reaching out to my senior high school principal and others, the guidance in this one. How do you talk to their students and make them feel that's relevant and to their life? Do you do this?
You know, I think when, you know, prior to turning seventeen, where when they reach seventeen, they can essentially drop out if they want to, which you don't like to see. But I think prior to that, you've got, like, truancy intervention plan meetings and truancy elimination plan meetings where, you know, you get the student in and you get the parent in, and, you know, we have a new student services liaison coming on board that will be doing some social work stuff. I think there's a way to, you know, involve that individual and get them more directly involved. Sometimes those reasons why kids aren't coming to school, you know, could be related to anxiety or mental health issues. You know, it could, there could be any number of different reasons why. I think sometimes bringing close to the table and having those conversations can help, I think, finding an adult in the building that the child identifies with, that kind of serves as a quasi-mentor that, you know, follows up with them, which I know are, for our students that have IPs, I know our case managers are doing that. But, you know, when, once a child becomes seventeen or older, it becomes much harder. When they're under seventeen, once they reach, I think the new law is six unexcused absences, they can be cited, they can go to the magistrate, and that has some teeth to it, because it becomes chronic, the magistrate can, you know, basically take their driver's license or suspended for, you know, a period of time. But once, once a child hits seventeen and older, you know, we don't, you know, we don't have any of those carrots to handle as much. So it becomes much harder as they get older, for sure.
I have a lot of other questions. When we get back to that math, I know, obviously, we have some students who are achieving, we have some students who are doing very well. At this point, I know we have our eighth grade, we have our math program going, the seventh grade for algebra, we're doing expanded things for the sixth and third algebra. Is there any time you think that we're holding back some of those achievers because of the environment of students that are not able to get it because of the system we're using? Or do you think we're still providing all those opportunities for those high achievers to still flourish?
I have not been in our classrooms as much as the principals have. I can tell you that, based on what I've seen, I think with differentiation, students are still being given the opportunities to grow, to, you know, look at math at higher levels. Now, we're exploring some other pieces related to that. A lot of the students you're referring to, not all of them, but a lot of them are gifted and have gifted IPs. We're doing some things through our gifted programming, right to in the junior high to weave in some additional math, use a program called Math Forum, which is from the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics, that provides some kind of real-world problem-solving pieces that are helping with those students. And even looking at, if we have fifth and sixth graders who, you know, want to accelerate in their math courses, you know, what kind of avenues does online open up? You know, can we, you know, in the future allow a fifth and sixth grader, they're ready to take seventh grade math, could they, you know, work on it, you know, online or a junior high school student, you know, high school? So looking at some of those possibilities as well. Now, I mean, it's, it's definitely been a transition, we're only a couple of years removed from right then not having homogeneous grouping in math. We're now heterogeneously grouped, and, you know, there, you know, teachers, like, that's a, that's a different, you know, skill set. You know, once you've got accustomed to teaching every student in math that's all on the same level, and then all of a sudden you have multiple levels, you know, it's, you know, it's a different skill set. But I would argue very strongly that there is great benefit in having those mix abilities together in the same classroom, because students learn how to collaborate with one another, they learn how to help one another. One of the best ways to learn is to have to teach it to somebody else, and so there are definitely some benefits. And that was why last year, we focused heavily in our PD on differentiation, and that's why we're continuing with that this year, because we know that it's something teachers have to continue, it's a tool we have to continue to sharpen and develop.
As you indicated, the amount of time we're investing in our literacy program and allowing the charts is much higher than we're investing in our mathematics on a daily basis. Will we wait until next year to realize that, or is this something you think you could do mid-year by sitting down, talking to the principals and seeing what the new rebalance says? How would you suggest approaching that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I know for me, like, I see a real sense of urgency in this area. I mean, I'm not going to say that I, you know, don't want to see literacy grow as well, because I do, but literacy's at a, you know, a much better place, and we have strong leadership in Melissa. You know, I think, you know, with math, you know, we have to be a little bit more, okay, you know, this is, this is what we're faced with, so, you know, how, you know, what can we do, you know, in the interim? You know, what can we do next year? I would be hesitant to change the elementary schedule once the school year has started. I don't think that's in the best interest of kids, but, you know, when we sit down with, you know, principals and get feedback from teachers, if there's, you know, if we can come up with something that makes the amount of literacy time and math time more equal in a day than, to me, the beginning of the 2021 school year is the time to, you know, make a change like that. But, you know, some of the intervention pieces we talked about, that's not something that has to wait until next year. You know, the more targeted PD, leveraging the teachers that are using investigations and CPM really, really well, and having them provide PD for teachers, that doesn't need to wait until next year. So, you know, I definitely see a sense of urgency, for sure.
With regards to SAT scores, I think it actually shows very well we did so well. I think that's good. Have we gotten the, received the AP score results from last year? And have we ever looked at the ACT scores, to see how scores we're doing versus compared to AP, SKT scores?
The ACT data is in on hand as well. I didn't generate that for this evening, but we do have access to that data. As far as AP scores, we do have that data back, and we had averages, like, average score in the AP exam of three or better in all of our AP courses except for one.
Can you tell us about that?
AP statistics.
That's actually, isn't that a new one we put into AP level? I think we put that as ours, with students able to take. That was very recent that we moved to that, so, I mean, that's a whole different subject here, too, because we didn't play into previous. I would thank you very much for the information.
Absolutely.
Can I just ask you, how many students do you have enrolled in the AP classes?
For this year or?
For last year.
For last.
And how many, first of all, how many actually take the AP exam?
Campbell, can you panel off us?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I know it's not a hundred percent, but I could, I could pull up the numbers of students enrolled versus number of tests. I think we had about two-hundred-and-fifty-some tests that were taken this year, but.
I have the data document that we put together.
And like, how many students are taking multiple, you know, so it's a literacy student? And also, we say that three is a pass rate, you know, is a three, but how many are really getting four or five, which is most colleges, well, it's.
Right, right. I don't have that broken down by student. I mean, I, you know, I can tell you in, you know, in two thousand and nineteen, you know, AP English Lit was at a four, AP Micro Economics, you know, was at a four point three. The two AP cap courses that were in the spring were both over four. And, you know, one had twelve kids in it, one had eight kids in it. AP English Lit had eight, Micro had six. So, you know, you're looking at, you know, smaller numbers in some of those classes.
And I think, too, sometimes it's hard to look at averages. We need to look at, well, how many students are getting fives, and how many students are getting fours? Because you can average a two and four and get a four.
Sure.
And one's failing and one's, you know, passing. So.
Yeah, that's true.
It doesn't mean that most of our kids are passing. It could mean, like, half of them are getting a four and half of them are failing. So, I mean, you can't just look at average.
Well, I think, I think the other thing, too, that you have to look at with that, and it's, you know, myself and Mr. Campbell, and Philip, we've had some preliminary conversations around it, is, you know, the correlation between a child's grade in the AP course and the score of the child that's on the AP exam. I think that's a really valuable data point as well.
Especially if there's a discrepancy?
Yeah. Sometimes there is.
Um, Doctor, do students after third grade get tested each year?
Yes. Third grade, the first year, they start PSSA testing, and they test every year through a grade. Then maybe at high school, they have Keystone exams.
And what, what?
Algebra One, Biology, and Literature. Typically, Algebra One is typically ninth grade. Typically, algebra one is typically ninth grade and bio and lit are typically tenth. So really, you know, the exception of a few cases here and there, students don't, you know, once they hit third grade, they won't stop testing because even in high school. And honestly, once they hit eleventh and twelfth grade, they're taking the AP exam. So we're basically testing kids in some form or another, you know, really from the very beginning because even K two, you've got Dibbles and Thomas and Mel and that kind of stuff.
First thing, do you think that testing children every year is a necessary thing, especially when they're in grade scale?
You mean, same.
You know, I.
Personally, personally, I don't think it's worth it because I think, you know, they're going to have these PSSA tests. I'm sure the teachers or members know that some of them are preparing their students for tests so that they can do better.
Not in this district, yes. Not in this district.
Well, I think, well, I think that is in this district.
I mean, I, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, me personally, you know, do I think we overtest kids and rely too heavily on standardized tests? Yes, I do. But I also know that it's the metric that the state has given us to measure some of our effectiveness, you know, as a district. And so as long as that metric is there, it becomes incumbent upon us as educators to figure out how to instruct students so they can be successful. I have always believed that if you provide quality instruction and you build relationships with kids and you teach in a way where kids learn, the assessments will take care of themselves. And I, you know, I've always believed that and I believe that very strongly. I, I've never supported teaching to the test. That's, that's not something I stand behind. There are other districts in Burke County that do it that way. Exeter is not one of them. And, and that's something, you know, consistently, you know, Melissa and I have had conversations about and neither one of us support that because, you know, otherwise, you know, if that's the case, then just sit in front of the computer and give the test prep. It's like, if, if it takes away the effectiveness of the teacher and, you know, all the research shows that the number one factor of student success is that teacher in the classroom that they see on the daily basis. And so I could talk forever on that and I've talked too long already, but.
Doctor, I have another quick question.
Yeah.
And this has to do with the metric itself. You know, I'm looking at the state averages and I'm noticing that Exeter scores while they appear to be, you know, pretty far below what we would believe to stand before. All at, above the, the state average and that the math scores, which I don't see them fall pretty significantly below the LA or the, you know, the line of course. So how much of it is a product of the test itself? You know, there's one question you want to answer, but I think it's just something that can keep in mind and put things in perspective is how much of it really is the metric that we're, we've decided to use. The other thing that I wonder about too is, is not only examining cohorts internally, but also in examining cohorts relative to similar school districts throughout the state. For instance, I can remember at a time, the state used to generate a list of schools and they would be in a hierarchical order based upon similar characteristics. You'd be able to find to three districts in, in state who are comparable to, to your district and you would make your comparisons to those instead of trying to compare yourself to the state average. So I wonder if you ever do anything like that, some of that, some of this meta-analysis that's available, I'm not sure the state still does that kind of stuff, but it was something I could recall at one time.
Yeah, I think your first question, I think as far as the math assessment, it's a really valid point. You know, lots of us have been saying for quite some time now that there's a major disconnect between scores that students are getting on the math assessment and, you know, exactly what's happening in classrooms and what's happening in schools. Because there is, I mean, and, and, I mean, you know, when we have, you know, when I look at, at, you know, let's take the junior high for example, and I look at our eighth graders who take the Algebra One keystone exam and I don't know the exact percent, but I think close to a hundred percent of large along these kids are proficient or advanced on the Algebra One keystone. But there's a sizable percentage of those kids that are basic on the, you know, math, eighth grade math PSSA exam. You can't tell me that a child in eighth grade that is proficient or even advanced on the keystone exam in Algebra One, you know, I mean, that's not just that child testing for it, you know? So I do think there's, there's something, you know, amiss with that assessment and, and things need to be restructured there. I don't know if the state still does those meta-analyses. I agree with you. I think it would be worth looking into. I can certainly do some digging. I know, you know, they always publicize a list of SGP scores for every single district in the states you can compare that way, but, you know, I don't know if they do drilling down to, you know, districts, but it's, it's something worth looking into. I agree with you.
Melissa, can you help deal with that?
Yes.
They can now rely on paid products that will do that for you? There are products that will help you. You can drill down through everything from economics to achievement scores to attendance to size, population, tax base, do you need it? But at a cost.
Patrick, I'm going to try and ask you three quick questions. Do you know what the long-term trajectory of our keystone scores have been since we started testing or even, even since 2014? I'm just looking for an impression of the exact numbers.
Yeah, we've, we've been in that sixty-five to seventy-five percent range in all subject areas since about 2015. I didn't put all of that data on the presentation for tonight, but we do have that data.
So it is, it is steady, right?
Correct, correct.
And then would you say that you can identify individual classrooms that are doing noticeably better or worse when it comes to the PSSA data than some of the counterparts in the same grade level with this data?
Yeah, so, so that data is available. You know, it's, it's available to administrators within on-hand schools. And so, you know, it is something we can look at. You know, you can look at it by building, you can look at it across grade level, you know, but the one, I guess, caution or kind of the other side of that data that I think is important to remember is that when, when principals are building schedules, you know, at the building level, there are any number of different reasons why a principal may decide to put a certain student or certain students in one teacher's classroom over another. Maybe it's because of how that teacher relates to a certain kind of population or whatever. And so I think a truer metric there is when the PDS data comes out, which is going to be at the end of the month, which is growth. I think if you look at those two pieces side by side, you know, you may have a teacher whose achievement is low, but if their growth is through the charts, then they're still doing an amazing job because of where it is when they got them to the end of the year. It's the low achievement, low growth, that's where, you know, you would have concerns. And in those instances, you know, that becomes a conversation with, you know, the principal, you know, and the teacher and, and we, you know, we've had some of those conversations. We had principals last year that, you know, brought teachers into their office and sat down with them and said, hey, I'm seeing this data, this is where I'm concerned. And we saw really positive results, you know, as a result of some of those things.
Could we, going forward, maybe get some insight into the growth that occurs for some of those teachers after those, I'll call it an intervention or, or correction or some of the work that's been done with those teachers where both growth and achievement are comparatively lower than the other classroom at a grade level?
Yeah, so one of the things that I was talking to Dr. Phillips about is I think when PDS comes out and we have the PDS growth data and we have the SGP scores, which usually come out in November, you know, maybe when we get into winter time in January, February, maybe I come back again, share that PDS data and some of those SGP scores so we can compare achievement and growth together and kind of hit at some of those things because it's, it's hard to kind of speak to that, you know, without having that data. And the state just hasn't moved it yet.
Okay. And then the only last question I had is, you know, chiming in on some of the discussion regarding the cost that we made or the investment that we made into investigations. Are you prepared at some point now or later to say whether that's a successful program and we would definitely want to move completely away from it or we want to keep going, but later?
I'm not prepared to answer that question now. Later I will be prepared to answer that.
Do you think that that's a question for this year or do you think that's a question for the future?
It could be. I mean, it, it could be, you know, as we head into 2021, I think, you know, we can definitely make, make a recommendation. And, you know, as we work on budget, you know, knowing, you know, that, you know, Anson needs those numbers sooner than later, you know, that that'll kind of get me started talking to teachers, talking to principals, looking at some of that data and, and, you know, making a recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Sorry I took so long. I went a whole lot longer than I thought.
More about the Phillips, I wouldn't.
This is important.
No, you went more than ten minutes.
Yeah, I know, I know. You're right. You're right. I'm quite clear with some of the rest of our.
All right. Next question. So next, next to ladies, discussion I have and we're going to shift gears here and talk a little bit about general fund budget adoption and some decisions I think we have to make still being relative to the possibility of, of discussion.
Okay, this discussion was put on the agenda as a result of a discussion we had because this function can be in September. Put it on the agenda last month because, well, we'll get to that. Why don't we start by just talking about the timeline. Act one, two thousand and six makes the question a two-step process. Preliminary budget, we qualify for exceptions. Then we develop the preliminary budget which shows that you may need to raise taxes above the index. Our index is three point three for 2021. I, myself and the administrators, supervisors have started developing the preliminary budget. But the discussion tonight will be whether the board will actually adopt preliminary budget. The timeline is one month ahead of other years because of presidential election year. So the preliminary budget would have to be adopted in January. So I would start dividing the school board with preliminary budget data in November and then continue on making the presentations and the board would adopt in January. We can follow the same process that we have done at least the last ten budget cycles. Another reason that I brought up discussion last month is that we have this new process now that we're developing to look at budget reductions and we'll be having meetings in November through March. So I just want to get a sense from the board whether we really want to go through the process of developing a preliminary budget, you know, in conjunction with coming up with a budget reduction process. So that's why we need to discuss it. The act one index, again, three point three percent based upon a value of nil. If you raise the index, it will generate one point, almost one point five million in this night's tax revenue. The exception that the district will qualify for 2021 is a special ed exception. This is the worksheet that is used. We still are preparing our AFR, so the number may not be one point two million. It may be something a little less, but we do qualify for a special ed exception. And what that means is you could bring these taxes above three point three percent by an additional point eight seven mils, one point two million. So those two pieces together, the act one index and the exception, could be almost a two mil increase, which we can allow because of that index. Well, why do we qualify for such a large exception? The index, the exception is based on comparison of seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. Our special ed exception expenses actual have gone up one point three million. And if you look at the budget for nineteen twenty, it's going at another one point two million. Obviously, the areas of increase are wages and benefits. And you can see the trend. That's adding new staff in eighteen, nineteen, which we did. But we also saw increases due to benefits replacements in contracted professional services and tuition. So those are the areas that are causing this increase and that's why we do qualify for a referendum exception for special education. Moral of this included in the nineteen twenty budget. So what do we really have to look like in twenty twenty? Just starting to put the budgets together, we won't have those numbers until early November of what it actually looks like. But it is going to look something like this. A deficit of four point eight million. That's what I showed last year when I did the five-year projection. This year, we ended up with seven hundred fifty thousand excess of expense or deficit. The budget for, excuse me, eighteen, nineteen. The budget for nineteen twenty shows a deficit of two point seven. So if there's no tax increase in twenty twenty one, we will be showing a habit deficit. And where is it? It's in wages and benefits. So historically, over the last ten budget cycles, the district or the school board has kept the increase at the index or below the index. Only one year did, in that ten-year cycle, did we take a small exception, a special ed exception of thirty-nine thousand. In eighteen, nineteen, we did adopt a resolution to stay within the index. We do not qualify for the exceptions in that year. So really, the discussion we had at business function and I was asked to put this on the agenda is, do we want to adopt a preliminary budget or adopt the resolution to stay within the index? The resolution will have to be adopted no later than voting in December. In the process of adopting a preliminary budget, we need to show a need to use referendum exceptions. And I believe as we develop this budget, that preliminary budget will show a need to raise realistic taxes above the index, in other words, our unassigned fund balance will, you know, be under the eight percent limit. Why do we adopt preliminary budget? Maintain flexibility. That's why we've done it over the years. State funding's not there, we don't have retirements. This is the last year of two, a teacher who's support contract, so there'll be some assumptions there. And healthcare programs, we don't have, make assumptions there, we don't have that rated until later in the year. Again, I mentioned before, historically, we just adopted preliminary budget, but we have not based on the index. So the school board's goal is to examine the budget and find areas to save. So the emphasis is on, is on budget production. So if we choose to, the board wants to adopt a preliminary budget, showing the tax rate increase above the index is sending a long message. So that's where we ended up with our discussion of business function. I think there was some support to do a preliminary and then realistically, showing the track record, should we even adopt, go to adopt the resolution to stay within the index? We can discuss it again in November. I can show by draft what the preliminary budget will look like based on what administrators put together and what our wage and benefit budget looks like. Or just the board, the majority at this point feel that let's just go for the resolution so we can do this.
I think during our, our, the discussions meeting, I mean, there were arguments from both sides. And I think the, the idea of taking the exceptions was favored by some because it, it identified what you said, it's an opportunity for flexibility during the, at least the budget development process. On the flip side, some of us also, I think, recognize the fact that this is a year that we've devoted to really putting a lot of time and effort throughout the entire year in examining, you know, our expenses, working with the community, looking for areas where we could really start to scale back and in ways that don't necessarily compromise, you know, the quality and value of the programs that we have. So that's, that's, that's a tall word, but that's, I think that's the message that this board was articulating, I think, up until the business functions meeting. was articulating, I think, up until the business functions meeting, sort of, to grant foul that. So I just would like to say personally, I can envision us going beyond the index of 3.3 based upon our, our increases for the past, you know, few years and our dedication to try to, to maintain and stabilize costs. To me, I think that's an important goal. And, you know, last year, we, we started with, I think, close to 4%, if I'm not mistaken, and brought that down to 1.5% and down. But that was with a lot of hard work and a lot of inspection and careful analysis. I fully expect that's gonna happen again if the preliminary budget is established or something. If you were to ask me, I would, I would prefer to, rather maybe go for this district and skip with that 3.3% as our, as our, as our map. That, I'm just expressing my opinion.
Well, I mean, you can keep to this 3.3, I think, you have, you have a couple of different issues wanting to answer this. Anne just pointed out, we have the special education option there. And over the last three years, when we're looking at that budget increasing to 1.2 million dollars a year, I can't envision it not doing the same thing next year, based on the last three years. Unfortunately, that's where we're trending, which means next year, you're gonna be almost 15 million on an 82, 83 million dollar budget, 81 million dollar budget. You know, Sam's slipping a piece of the pie there. I think you have to, I don't think you wanna hamstring yourself going into the budget season. I think it's better to have all of your options in front of you and then to opt out rather than not having an option. Especially since I'm not gonna be on this board, I don't wanna constrain others going forward what they have to do. But I, I think even if you're trying to contain your cost, the first thing that you have to handle is a 2.7 million dollar overrun this forecast for this year before you even get to next year. And that's not gonna be handled by saying we're not gonna take money. Because unfortunately, I'm not gonna talk about funding for most, because we've done that to the nth degree, we go where that's at. But I think that, I think there's gonna be a long, hard look to figure yourselves the 2.7 million plus another 1.2 for your, 1.2 for your special ones. You're looking at more money right off the bat if you're at IGO safe. And I, I don't think we're gonna be able to take ourselves. Will you use that exception based on previous history? No, but at the same time, I don't think you should hamstring yourself.
Yeah, well.
I, I just wanna add, I agree with Dame, I don't think that we would go over the index, and I think that we should pass the opt-out resolution. And, you know, just recognizing that I don't think that the board probably has the will to go above the index, I think is a big point of this. And the extra work that Anne will have to do, and that thirteen will have to do, and that Bob will have to do with being in this process that the state has set out is going to create more steps and more headaches for a process that we've already had high expectations for and new expectations this year than we have had last year, than we had last year. So I think that just to allow then more room to succeed in some of the expectations that we have in terms of cost cutting, I think that this would be a relief to not have to also go through the process of doing this schedule that the state sets out and that we even have last time, I think that we did last year because of the presidential election. So I think that it's, it's a good option to pass the opt-out resolution.
I'd raise, I'd raise.
Dame might wanna raise taxes over 3.3%. Sorry, I have to bring in a little buzz a little bit. Any other thoughts? I mean, I, I think it, you know, it's, it's, it's important for Dame to know where to go here, and probably the sooner we can, kind of, get this resolved, the better. And I don't know what more we need to discuss, what more information people need to hear in order to kind of, um, understand where, you know, you individually fly in the decision process. I know we've, many of us have spoken strongly about, particularly at the end of last year, where we, we had to, you know, vote the budget, it was very immediate, and it was a lot of, we had to, we had to make decisions at the last minute that were really hard to make. And now, I think this year, we're gonna take a much more, we're gonna take a process that's dedicated to kind of spending a lot of the time, you know, with the budget all through the year. And I think that's gonna, that's gonna help us. And it's gonna, it's, in ultimately, I hope it will result in some logical savings proficiency and not necessarily digging into the, the bone, what we consider to be, uh, the real important aspects of our school board. Any other, any other comments? So of those people that have spoken, I think the majority so far are in favor of trying to stay within the, within the index. That's my interpretation.
Well, I do think, I mean, I think if we're going to do this, I think, you know, something that Patrick mentioned about looking at investigations, I mean, if we truly believe that the impact that we have on students are, is the teacher in the classroom, then we should look at those opportunities to strip out any expenses for ineffective programs and make sure that we're investing or we should be investing, which is the teachers and the culture that's the goal to, to achieve our educational objectives. So that perhaps would be one of my points, when we start to look at these programs, is to realize that in the end, just like any organization, that your culture and your people are largely responsible for your success.
And two, just looking at the, the data that Patrick gave us about our IEP is at 21.78% and the state average is 16%. That is something that, you know, we need to address in being maybe more proactive in younger ages with younger kids to make sure that they're set up for success and that we're not sending them the IEP route, but we're giving them all they need without, but we're doing the same things for them. They just don't need Ego work ethic.
Outside of James, is there, is there anyone else who would object to limiting our, our budget to stay within the index?
I would say eliminate the ceiling.
That's enough. So you're staying, you're staying below the index? At the index below?
I actually like to see a hooded name.
I, I wouldn't expect you to say anything.
Consistency.
Okay. Okay. Anne, thank you for your presentation. I think you've got some direction here. That's what I'm here.
No, I mean, what I'm saying, I would opt out, but what I, I'm not gonna opt out on behalf of the people who are responsible for educating our kids.
But Mike, I don't think that it's realistic to think that almost $5 million is what comes as a result of not buying a little, or, or, or buying a little less pay.
I agree with you. We're gonna have to figure that out, but, I mean, what we heard tonight from our assistant superintendent, and we all know this from our own personal experience, is that the people that you're putting in the classroom for any kids are, are having that. And, you know, I know, I know where we are in the budget process right now, what we're talking about, but we start off the year and we've got $5 million deficit and we end the year and we end up having an overrun, we end up with a positive cash flow in the end. Right?
Well, 1819, 18,000, I think.
It was positive.
No, negative. So it's, I mean, more the reality.
Yeah, I mean, this is the chicken that we're gonna play. You know, the fact of the matter is, is that we are saddled with a system that doesn't properly fund our schools and that sits on the back of our taxpayers in this community. And, you know, we're trying to minimize the impact, but it does have on our taxpayers. We did, you know, we, we didn't do it last year. I mean, we totally. But the fact of the matter is, is that this is just gonna be something that we're gonna wrestle with till there is some other solution to fund schools. Hope our life has an impact at some point, right? When we, we made that investment to see what happens there. You know, the Redding Eagles, we've been publishing their campaign things, who, we talked about, where would you cut out the fan in the school district? And we cut out the water for our teachers.
Is that gonna be a question?
Yeah, where, you know, cut out the, where, where is the fan? I mean, we have 50 more students in Riceville this year than we did last year. So, you know, where, where do you cut? You gotta accommodate those students. We had to open multiple classrooms to do that. I mean, I don't think there's a person on this board that doesn't wanna go back to this community and say, we're good. You know, if you guys are good, you're never gonna have to take quality education. But we, we have to wrestle with the realities of what's going on. We have, we have a history of not, not, of taking the index but not going over it anyway. And I think in the end, when all is said and done, the district sort of figures out how to do it. Last year, we had an $1,000 loss. We do carry 8%. We do carry the maximum that we can carry in terms of reserves, but the 8% that we carry as a school district in reserves is no different than what people tell, tell us that those of us, you know, are, we have to make sure if we lose our job that we have two or three months of ability to pay our bills. So 8% on our budget sounds like a lot of money until you look at what our monthly operating costs are. And it's really not a lot of money. So.
I think building off that too, Mike, I mean, Anne gave us projections for what five years would look like of our finances. And, you know, some of that would work itself out, just like it has in the past couple of years. And I'm sure that that 4.8 million dollar deficit is gonna work itself down a significant chunk by, by cutting some of the new requests and everything like that. But that five-year projection basically showed us in a very, very difficult and, I'll say, dark fiscal projection in the next five years. So there's no way that we can continue to do business as we have been or as we're projected to do in that, that project. But at least I don't think that there is a way for us to do that. Because we would be doing the community a disservice, and I think we would be doing the district a disservice in the long run if we can't learn to pay teachers more money year over year because we haven't looked at any of our operational reports to try and have a more cost-effective method of delivery to the students.
Well, I think to Dame's point, when we did sort of beat this to death over the last year with the budget process, is that we're, we're gonna have to look harder, but at the same time, I think that, you know, sort of have to be realistic about what we're actually seeing too. I mean, if the majority of your costs are staffing, in effect, what you're saying is that we're usually not set, not in effect, what you're saying.
Yeah.
So who are you gonna adopt?
Uh, I don't know, but we're gonna have to look at it. And if we don't, you know, I wonder, are we gonna be able to pay any teachers more after the next five years when we don't have fund balance? Are we gonna be able to pay administrators more? Are we gonna be stuck in this market curve where Exeter is no longer competitive in hiring new teachers when we have retirements? I mean, we are, we are burdened and saddled with costs that we can't afford in the long run, and if we wanna be effective in the long run, we need to pay some price. That's my.
Wonder if you stay in the same trajectory, you're looking at five years to stay with the preliminary budget, because you can't go negative on that. So that's where you're heading right now. It'll get taken over, just like the people did in other, in Roderick Anderson or did. And that's a rule that has to happen, you know, ahead of the world. I don't think you want that to happen here. You told me that what happened to happen to your homework, but that's the problem. It's not about what the new program's coming online, the new teacher hires, if you're trying to come back. You have to take a hard look at what's existing and say, it's not gonna be here. Because that, unfortunately, when you do that, there's someone who's gonna be really upset. Just like last year, we tried to make one minor cut, and when you make major cuts, you get a lot more people unhappy.
So I, I, I think what I heard you say, that you're, you're in agreement with what I just said. Is that right?
I'm in agreement with you, see, that you've gotta realize that over the last, since 2009, and this 15 to 16% of the increases, which at this point, we have a surplus, if you look at that, or we wouldn't be in this panic room, seeing our bank account whittling down to nothing. I think if you're lucky, a 2.4 million overrun, an 4 million dollar overrun next year, you're basically bleeding yourself alive. So at the end of the four years, you don't get the five years, you get the four years if you're lucky. At that point, you look back and go, I wonder what if we've done something 15 years ago? At hindsight's point in time, you're all broke, you're out there with rags, and everybody else is rounding pretty rich. So it's pretty depressing.
So, so you're advocating that our mils rate shouldn't be like 33 mils, it should be like 4 or 5?
No, what I'm asking is, I, I hate mils. But at the same time, I haven't seen an adequate program come forth that sounds like it's gonna save anybody. Every program I've seen come forth from the state at this point, looks like it's not trying to help anybody. I think it's just a backwards way of paying money. I don't think this is the only thing that the state's having problems. I think we look across the board, the state's having problems, whether you're looking at the transportation industry, which I'm involved in, or you're looking at industry, education, when you're looking at other programs, your health, human services, I think everyone's probably up, because I think the pensions are bringing them out to the point where they can't survive. And I think that's the reason we're gonna see the state, it's possibly gonna back us from, obviously, if you don't want your son.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you like this one on the agenda, agenda for this board going on or December?
I say go to December.
If it was on the November agenda, theoretically, could the board undo what we did in November because of all income?
Well, I guess it could, because, you know, you don't have to submit it to the state until December.
Well, I guess my, my question is, I mean, if we wait till December and we decide not to go this route, what does that do to you in terms of all the work that you've had to prepare?
Well, we're, I'm continuing on the same timeline.
I mean, I think one of the, one of the comments was that, you know, like, we must have, I mean, I think we were underneath, had the sense, essentially, have a history of conscious conceptions that, and, and we go to 3.3, we gave the, the need for you with your all, you know.
Appreciation for all the initial presentation, preparation, but we're still going to have to have these discussions on budget production and looking at all parts of the budget, which still requires, you know, us to pay off the 2021 budget.
So the earliest we could vote would be in November meeting, or could we do it at the October voting?
You can do it.
I'd rather do it at the October voting. I think we're kind of resolved, and that way it takes the gun out of the trunk behind. That is probably more now, I think, than, than.
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, if, if we wait until November, is, will you have more clarity to be able to kind of give the board guidance if we wait until November? You, will, will this be less of a, will this be a decision that you've ever informed in some way?
Will it be even better in December?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I mean, I think the, the basic answer is if this board goes to the index. That's not gonna change from this month to next month to December. Does this board have the, her will?
That's what we're talking about.
Right, and one area which I, I don't know now yet, because staffing requests haven't been until October 18, is what is special ed going to cost in terms of staffing? And as they're putting in a budget for 2021, non-staff related expenses, you know, that could provide some more information on where that trend is really going. So.
So, so November or December is what you're gonna say?
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
But you know, there's no energy to go test in any way. So, lots will have to mess up next week as much. But again, just as much actually next week as you get next month, as you get into several boards. I think that this is, this make your life easy, get it forward, make a start looking towards a future.
In December will be an election right now.
And the president's still not giving this life. He elected this year, I don't know if it's something without him. He said we have a presidential election this year. I still try to look at it. Which country are you in?
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did. Look at the table.
I think one thing that I, one thing I just want to say is that the discussion that we're having, you know, is happening to the sixteen-member school districts in Berks County. The financial challenges that we're facing are no different than any other school district in the state in that matter. So, you know, we're not unique. There's not a scare tactic here. I mean, we, we realize, and after last year, I think we all realized the playing field that we're on. You guys are, have adopted that growth mentality of trying to, you know, figure out where we can strip costs and get out of the issues of the exception of the game. But what we're dealing with isn't unique here. So, you know, let's develop our plan, let's, let's go in there and try to do what we can do, and let's just be sure that we both value the value.
But there is something to be said too, for developing that plan, right? At least you're working towards something. So, so I'm just not going with the idea of October.
What was Mark saying? Was it two?
Yeah. And I...
I'm allowed to change my mind.
Yeah, October's a week from today. You know, I'm not, I'm not so sure. Exactly.
We've already said...
I've always said that in October, our October voting session is a week from today. I'm just saying I'm not so sure whether all board members are comfortable within that three period of time, you know, with the citizens. And I, I think of the person, board members, and those who think and ask questions that we need to be...
I agree, and I agree with you on that too. You know, just hearing a lot of this right now, the people who are on the committee, you know, already familiar with all this. I personally like that a lot. So, I think next year is just...
I think, you know, I, I appreciate where you're at, Sharon. I wouldn't, in this, I, I just don't want to burden Ann for, for another month of having more through this process. That's my big concern.
Is that a burden? Is that a burden because you were saying you still have to, you still have to do a lot of the same stuff? So, is that what he's saying, that that's a burden? Or have you put it off like for months? Is it a burden?
No, we still have to continue to develop funding. Because all the yellow stuff, Eric, you wouldn't want to do if you did it? If we opt out, then there would not be any presentations to the board?
We wouldn't do anything.
So, all the yellows stuff would be...
Go.
That's not to say that we won't be aware of what's going on.
Right, right. She wants to be doing it, it just won't happen. So, that's what she needs to be doing.
Well, I suppose that he said it would be a burden to Ann, so that's why he asked if Ann isn't a burden. You consider it to be a burden.
That's our job, right? Well, I mean, if, if it's not going to cover any extra work from October to November, then I don't really care about pulling off November. I, I, I just don't think it will change the outcome. And I'd rather just get it off your plate as soon as we can. If as soon as we can this November, I'm okay with doing it in December.
I mean, I have to stick to this timeline. We have to put the budget together. You know, waiting till November is really not going to impact the overall, because I think this is the direction the majority of the board wants to go in. I can focus more on not only putting the budget together, but designing these meetings that we're going to have in between November and March, and working with administrators on what their role is going to be.
Well, it definitely see you guys that I, I am my way forward.
Okay. All right. We're going to have to move on because we have a lot more to cover this evening. And I know we have a lot of executive session later this evening as well. So, if we move on, at this point to public comments, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on any matters of the agenda or anything else that may be applicable to the board or the district, not just on... Okay? If not, we're going to move on to just discuss, given some of these different areas we've got, minutes for next week to approve. There'll be the board workshop meeting, minutes in September, and we're voting in September as well. We're policies. We have several that we do second reading. It could be the cellular telephones, the service hours in the schools, records management, public records, school organization, school calendar, and school day. We had some discussions about most of those at our last workshop meeting. I don't know whether anyone feels eligible to talk about any of those policies, but if not, I haven't heard any responses from votes over the past month. So, my assumption is that by next week, they'll be ready to go. And then we have several that are for first reading, and I just wanted to highlight some of these things. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but probably the biggest policy that, and the most substantial policy that we're looking at is policy 805, which is a version prepared as a response, is a lengthy policy. It's been revised to address aspects of preparedness and response, and things like security drills, safety and security assessments, a version planning, education and training. Conclusion of the policy also has a lot of information safe to say. And there are also some opt-in, opt-out provisions within this policy, decisions that our administrators have to make, I think, in terms of whether we want to include or not include this policy or discretionary. So, I would encourage our administrators to, particularly Dr. Miller, who's not here tonight, to, to really look at that policy right here and make, make whatever changes are necessary. Certainly, the next policy relates to the ball enforcement. And this is one of these policies that lines up basically with our school safety initiatives. There's some minor revisions to this policy reflecting technology and policy reference, terminology and policy references to school safety and security policies. Nothing major, though. That's a policy that currently exists, and some fine tuning moves onto that. School security personnel, it would pretty much outlines how we define the school security personnel, how we, how we hire, how we, and how we supervise those folks. Open exercises, flag displays. I think there was a little bit of commentary from a few board members in terms of modifying some of the language. I hadn't seen it before.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm looking at you.
I think, I think I understand the response to that too. And I think those were, you know, I think, I would agree with some of those recommendations. I thought they were...
Now you're smiling.
It was a fair assessment. And, you know, kind of make it, you know, puts a parody into it in terms of, you know, student respect on both sides. You know, those who decide to stand, those who decide to sit during a pledge of the flag, need to be respectful on both sides and ultimately, I would probably portray my policies like that's absolutely change.
Just clarification, Dave. I thought that students who do not pledge their flag, so to say.
No.
Maybe I wrote that wrong.
The, 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 what, the only thing was that those who chose not, those who, there were, those who chose to sit, I'm not stating, were the ones that were supposed to be respectful of those who were standing and pledging. And, and I think one of the points that a few board members pointed out was that those who were standing and pledging should also be respectful of those who were sitting and deciding to use their, their right to not, to not have to stand in those places. And that's their, that's a, that's a legal type of thing that they have to do. We'll be encouraging that note, but I think, you know, we are understanding and appreciating America, they have that, they have that right, and we should, that should be honored and protected.
So, I mean, the policy says students may decline to recite the pledge of allegiance or national anthem and to salute the flag on the basis of personal belief or religious conviction. I don't, I don't see there where it's the option that they don't have to stand for a pledge.
But that's typically what happens, though. Those who don't pledge the flag typically don't stand. And I can be, I don't know if we have anybody who does that, guys? Usually secondary principals, I mean, you bump into students who object to standing?
There was one case that I can think of from last year, and that, that sorted out. So, it's not something that happens frequently.
It's not a major issue. It's more our concern than it is, you know, practical. Although it does, it, it would become something important if someone decided to, suit the school district for our failure to respect the rights of those students who choose not to stand. Well, I understand what you're saying. It's not explicitly written there that they, but we're not going to, we're not going to demand that they sit.
I wouldn't demand that they sit.
Yeah, right. So, we're not going to put that in there.
I don't think that's in there. It's more to get specific, the harder it gets.
Yeah. I don't know whether that's necessarily makes a lot of sense for us to kind of clarify the standing, sitting aspect of it.
Is it also my understanding that teachers are supposed to lead the classroom with the pledge? Is that accurate?
I, I know at the high school, I lead the building, I'm a P A in the pledge, and I ask the students to rise for the pledge, and then I read the pledge with the P A.
We do that in elementary school too. Everybody stands at once, and it's a little more loud, you know, with the system.
Because I can remember instances where teachers would refuse to stand and recite the pledge, and it became a situation where if students in the classroom did, they appeared to be out of the norm for the rest of the body. So, it's interesting to me that that change has occurred, where it's now being recited over the P A system. So, I, I appreciate that response. Thank you.
We have a discussion on open exercises and flag displays. And then the final policy is the volume of video recording on school policies. There was a minor content update to direct our implementation of the policy. It hasn't changed, but that's an existing policy. So, those are the policies for the board for first and second reading next week. Turn it over to business functions, Mr. Dalton.
Thanks, Dr. Amber. For short and sweet, we have two items to vote on next week. Budget transfers and assessments.
We're talking to Mr. Japan.
We have several items, including presentations, appointments of a variety of staff, including major coaches, changes of status, due to absence, course requests, and... Please, please check number two, either in the office this morning, in the left-hand column, or the registration of the office. It's clear, it's always a way of people, six or twelve, eleven, sixteen, so maybe they have a bad question.
Yeah, something's missing.
Can I just say too about Mrs. Lunske leaving? This is the sixth administrator that's leaving from having, and I'm not, I'm only going to describe it. And that, that's just concerning to me, to have that amount of turnover, because every time we have like a new administrator take person in, there's a lot of changes on it at heart. And that really just keeps, I don't know, keeps... I don't want to say that, but I just, I don't like that amount of turnover. I don't think it's like this.
Dr. Amber, on number eight, in the conference request, we have two people going to stand up for children. A total of sixteen going on. A couple of questions that I had was, can one go and bring the information? Because it's two people in the same department that are probably...
Okay.
If one go and bring the information back, and number two, we have two rooms for two nights at one evening a night, which will, if both have to go, can they share a room? Is that an issue?
I, I would just say, Mr. Dalton, these are our special ed supervisors, and, and I am sure that we all know that our special ed program is an area that we want to really have nice creative expertise and, and training. So, I support the, I support the both going because one's secondary, one's elementary, and it can be very different issues. I mean, for instance, at the secondary level, they'll be talking about school work and transition. At the elementary level, a very different kind of configuration skills are required. So, I, I think, being someone who's attended conferences like this in the past, I think it's important that they, that they are going.
I don't think that's two rooms. I think, because it's three nights.
It's two nights. It's November sixth, the eighth, so it's two nights, right?
It's two nights, and ninety-nine dollars a room, I believe is the conference deal.
The cost is equal.
Then there's a...
Well, that's almost eight hundred dollars a room.
Yeah.
And for two nights, that'd be one evening.
Well, we will get them fixed before voting. Get that...
Anything else on the first round? If student promises, is that...
I'm just going to report in the filters that are consistent on radius, as well as voting on the contract with Bayside, pushing students, leaving a release permit, and early graduates.
I kind of made up what I would like to add to the list if it's possible. I'll engage Mr. Campbell in this discussion, but I had a contact today from somebody who was concerned about the Pennsylvania Renaissance Fair trip not making it onto the agenda. A family reached out to me and said that they already got paperwork, they already paid for the trip, but there was concerns that reservation, that they could make it on the board agenda wasn't clear.
If it was not sent to the board in time, it would not have been, it would not have been voted on the trip that have already left.
The line of trip is next Thursday. We vote on Tuesday.
So, the trip, right, the paperwork was not submitted in time for the deadlines that we have to meet the board's deadlines for, for approval.
So, can we give a board, say, if it's Thursday, just put it on the agenda for Tuesday, we can vote?
They can do whatever they want.
Sure.
I mean, you know, the... We were trying to hold, we were trying to hold the teachers to what the board has been very specific about. The trip should not go unless they're going to.
I know in the past, we voted on trips of already.
And very clearly, we were told not to do that. So, that's why we went to that teacher and said, "We did not do it in time."
I will say this.
Because the board wants to direct us to do that.
I support the trip.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, the, the message I got was, you know, they're heartbroken, they're looking forward to the trip. They did, the kids did everything they were supposed to do.
Absolutely.
They got the paperwork signed, they submitted the money, you know, and then they find out this administrative mistake or error or oversight or whatever, they're not going to get to go on.
If the board would like to direct us to accept the trip at this date, we'll take it.
Anybody opposed to that? I'll second it. All right.
So, it will be on the agenda then to be going, you know, pulling off of this. You know, we put, we put that policy in place at this level for a good reason. So, we shouldn't feel bad about having to apply it. Now, I think we can definitely be gracious about it in this situation. We know that, you know, we're here for the veteran of the students, and while the Pennsylvania Renaissance Fair is probably the preeminent institution of higher learning for students in literature classes... in literature classes, you know, it's worthy.
It's all about the turd, isn't it?
It's all about the turd, isn't it? But, you know, we, we should not feel like we've done something wrong because they didn't complete the paperwork on time, and it's not on us, we're not doing it. So I don't know, I don't think that's what you were suggesting, but I, I, you know, want to defend the reason we put that policy in place, which is we're exercising the authority that's granted to us under state law to authorize those trips, and it's kind of being, it would be taken out from under us before, and I think the administration responded to our request, we'll definitely appreciate that.
Well, if, if you're not, it's, it's, and there's still my reason, you have to vote on the limits, am I right or wrong?
No, we don't. We, some of the reports.
Who would have never gotten to the board agenda, because we did get the paperwork?
Well, whether it's on the agenda or not, it's just a report, so it's like a vote, it could be reported.
There have been many times where trips showed up and the board was very clear, why is this on, and they've already left. So we were responding to what the direction were you. But we will contact that teacher tomorrow, we will.
Certainly.
Have a go.
Yeah, I do appreciate the flexibility, I mean, I've never gone to a Renaissance Fair before.
It's actually fun. Go on the kissing bridge. Go across the kissing bridge.
It's not the turkey, I just want the turkey. No, and I appreciate the flexibility, the board, I mean, you know, the kids were looking forward to it, and I appreciate them, they were able to come in. More flawed than the teacher.
I, I don't know, I, I don't know about that, but with all the turkey.
We could get stirred, like, to do that again, probably, like, blocking might be a little bit, little bit over.
We're going to move on to athletic committee, Mr. Stratt.
So we have two items that we'll be discussing and voting on next week. The first is authorization for the district to begin having a unified indoor boxing team. And as I understand it, with my discussions with Tom and Gadd, that this is a club, that's not a club, it's a team, that will be open to our special education students, and I think exclusive to our.
No, it's, it's a combined.
It, it would, like, but it, it presents a unique opportunity, I think, for our special education students who may not have the same ability to participate in some of these after school and extracurricular activities with some of our other traditional programs. I'm, I'm reluctant to add anything at the board level in terms of new programs, but I think that this is a special circumstance where we're really coming to a population that isn't otherwise reached by some of our programs that we have already in place, and I think that this is extremely worthy, and I, I want to thank, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but Jillian, this was something that you were able to bring back from an inter-counting group that's related to this?
Tom and I met with him, with them this summer, they had approached us about it, and we've been working through all the, the specifics of it since then.
Well, thank you, guys, for bringing this to our attention, and thanks, thank you to the administration for bringing us into the group ahead of time. I think that this really is worthy, no matter my budget cutting tendencies, which others on the board might disagree with, but I disagree with the budget. No, 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 you disagree with my tendency to cut budgets, that's what I am. But, you know, I think that this is an extremely worthy addition, and I think this is something that we can get behind, and I believe that it will be a part of the three-year implementation process.
That was going to be the question, are we going to put this through the three-year? I mean, quite honestly, Special Olympics will fund the, the coaching.
They fund everything except transportation.
Everything except transportation, and we only have two trips, I believe? We've already figured out the cost, it would be about four hundred dollars to send the team to the away games.
So are you saying that in the three-month implementation process?
Three-year implementation. Would it be, the three-year implementation, the way it was set out, was the boosters or what have you, would have to fund it to that third year before we would take it over as a district?
And that includes transportation?
That would include everything, we would not be behind it. However, based on your speech and the minimal cost, if you want to.
Ah, I see, I see how you said that.
If you, if you want to ask for qualification, that would be well.
Well, I think in this instance, if we want to, I think holding to the addition of coaching positions on that three-year timetable is appropriate, especially, Special Olympics is prepared to cover the cost. I think that in this circumstance, for the reasons I stated previously, I'm inclined to support us funding the transportation to the events, as long as it remains that way before we take another decision.
If the board is, if we can have this discussed in the voting session, if the board is, it's about, we actually looked at the costs, four hundred and?
I, I actually think it was even less than that if we provide the staffing to drive the van, because the, the team itself can't have more than eight members on it. We were aiming a little bit more towards the sixth, which would be three Special Olympics eligible athletes, and then three, it can be anybody, can be regular ed or special ed students that just don't fit that qualification. So they would all fit in a van with the coach to go, and if, if, my memory serves me, and I don't think it's changed, the other two schools that are participating are Reading and Hamburg. So it would be one notch here, and then one at each of those places.
Well, I'll, I can make a motion next week to support us also bearing the cost of the transportation to these events for the next three years. The second, did, did anybody want to say anything on that?
I'll just go say, I'm not probably needing to add to this motion.
amended right now.
We can amend it, we can put it out to the next.
And then just have one agenda, and then respond by one. The second item under consideration would be an agreement with Wyman County School District to bring them into our Exeter swimming and diving team, that we also share services currently with Antietam School District. It's my understanding that the, the Wyman City School District, which is a child exeter, in the interest of trying to share these services and share these costs that a cost savings to the district, and I think also probably a cost saving to Wyman City as well.
Probably a program saving, they only have ten kids.
Okay. So I think that this is definitely a worthy cause, it's going to save the district money in the long run, and it's my understanding that Wyman City is prepared to invest into our program as well, so it's not only our funds that are funding Antietam and Wyman City.
They will cover the costs of their students.
So, that, it's my understanding that they're also willing to be paying the athletic fee to the districts for participation in this, or a modified fee?
Everything, that would include their fees.
Okay. Okay. So I, I think it's a worthy, it's worthy for approval. I also think that it will probably enhance our program to be more competitive, to be able to have some of the best athletes from not only two school districts, not only one school district, but three school districts. And I think that with the excellence that we've had in the past with the swimming and diving program, I think this is really, you know, and it's also more of the same. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything on that.
All I'll say as a member of the athletic committee is that I agree with Mr. Aaron's opinion, he's saying, and appreciate that Wyman City challenges, and appreciate the ability to cooperate.
And it does, we're right now, we have about thirty students, so we'll get us up to forty. Wilson has fifty, so I'm, so please vote the numbers up.
Our, our team's going to be, for, you're better than that.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Stratt.
The soles committee, Mr. Brady.
We have three items that I have to look at, or be concerned next week. Two of them, first is, we recommend that we accept the board letter for the Chiller replacement academy here at high school for seven hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Second, we're looking for the board to recommend the advertisement for the Marine Elementary replacement of classroom unit ventilators and dedicated outside pair units, which you can use for crawl, and a bunch of other things that are there, as well as the Jackson Wall Elementary School replacement classroom unit ventilators dedicated outside pair units for community, all of the things noted. The third thing is related to a document, you'll obviously see the G B C bill, document, and also I sit on each person's area, a single B and F by eleven, two-sided piece of paper. And what we're looking at here is something that is called guaranteed energy savings, and we're, we're company has made two presentations for facilities group over the last few months, and specifically what they're looking at is how can Exeter be more efficient in their operation with regards to energy usage, where possibly generated energy? And what they did, if we refer back to page fourteen of the document in the G B C, they completed step number one at this point, they identified their goals, they've done some data collection survey, felony report, and now they're starting to select a floor for request or proposals, and we're looking at step number two. No costs have been incurred by Exeter School District at this point, and through step two, but the caveat, no cost will be incurred through that step either. The caveat is, as long as all the work is before my, the floor group, there is no cost. If they have to go out for another outside consultant, then we would pick out teams, and that could be specifically targeted forensic studies that we'll look at, building envelopes and things of that nature. The idea here is to look at the buildings, look at operations, and look for benefits as far as savings, and obviously, we've already made major investments as far as changing the majority of our buildings lighting or L E D, but we're looking also at the potential for adding solar systems to some of our buildings. One specific location they noted was bring a solar field online over at the Awadon School area that's not developed. They possibly could be looking at other areas, I know there's a big field next to Wrighton that's not soccer field, or the field I can see, there's kind of like a slope area, they could possibly look there. So I think this is where they would go there. Now, I have had some research done, and that's on the B and F I love sheet with pros and cons, and what I suggest is reading through this, because I know it's getting late, we here for a while. I think we can return to the subject early next month, and then we get, get together first week, the first meeting, whatever. I will not be here next week, that's why I'm putting that out there. So if you have a chance to digest the G B C and this sheet, I think we'll be able to talk a little more intelligently about it, just wanted to introduce this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brady.
Jim, thanks for a treat. She's forgiven us.
Well, I have a plan to assist you on that.
Thank you.
The comments made here, were they the opinions of people other than yourself?
There were opinions of individuals that were involved in this industry, and they're looking at it objectively as what it benefits you and ways it may not benefit you. For example, you have a guaranteed cost, but in order to do that, no consultant or contractor goes into a business without knowing all the risks involved, so they try to lower the risk by playing the cost, you're building in an upper or contingency into that, so that's something you have to look at, you know. It could be a little more money, because you're not going to have to deal with any extras, you know, you're not going to get supplements at all, so, you know, it's just a balance of yin and yang, and, you know, we've always done our, our typical design bid build process, where we, then going out, we're going a little bitter, but we don't have necessarily control over the contractor at this point. This gives you a little more control, and allows you then to leverage that contractor to provide the services they're guaranteeing. But the key here is, it's all about savings, and they're looking at guaranteed savings in their program that'll then help to finance back some of the district. So really, it's about taking the money you would expect, and sorry, to pay for this. Same thing comes in the pledge of solar operation, and that way they use tax breaks, for example, they own the solar field for five years, we've paid rent, they can take the tax break, we buy it afterwards. Versus if we buy, because we're nonprofit, we don't have any tax breaks, therefore there's no building cost savings. So there's a whole bunch of.
My understanding was that they would give us that tax break in our cost.
That's how the cost gets reduced. So it's a whole balance of how you access it. So let's talk about it a little before that.
Jim, real quick before you close, regarding renovations to the junior high school, I know that at the end of last year, when we were completing some of the, we were doing the summer, we had to rebid some projects because the costs had been significantly higher than what K C B A.
And that was Jackson Wall, then the Marine, that's in a business.
Wait, so?
That was the Jackson Wall, the Marine bid, that was significantly, two million dollars over the bid.
Yes, yes.
So they're being re, redone.
So my question was going to be, it's my recollection that K C B A was going to return to the study and make sure that they hadn't, they didn't use anything else, and they, they were going to adjust any of the cost expectancy.
My understanding, right, Jim? They're going to revisit the bid.
Or they haven't revisited. So was this one of the ones that was revisited, and?
The junior high. No, it's the junior, junior highs.
So I guess the point that.
The team that's working, has worked on it, picked up after it, and it's left K C B A, their estimate that they gave to, you know, female leadership is eight hundred fifty thousand between mine, Chiller Park. So this number came in below what their respective number was.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So before we adjourn, I just want to say one thing else, that we've got an executive session following this meeting to address personnel and legal matters, and if you have something else.
I, I just want to thank Mr. Campbell, Mr. Flann, the administration, the Exeter Township Police Department, the families who raised the concerns about the traffic at the high school, being in common intensive supervision, sort of mobilized some of the resources at the township level to just sort of, you know, get some focus on the crosswalks and the lines needed, continuing to address that, and also helping people understand their own personal responsibility as, you know, the operators around safety and security of our students as they cross those intersections at thirty-seven and grand, and so on and so forth. So thanks for the effort on that. And unfortunately, it's something we have to continue, continue work with and review after the year, but, you know, as I've said about security in the past, you know, nobody wants to sort of pay attention to the best, if something happens to somebody, you won't be able to spend enough time to regain the confidence of the community, so I think we're doing the right thing, trying to be out in front of the state, so thanks, Tom, thanks, Eric, appreciate the effort, call, and the work you guys have been doing.
Okay, thanks, everybody, we'll adjourn.